Welcome to the November 30th meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. Councilmember Eddie Smotherman has our prayer and our pledge.
If you would, let's pray. Lord, thank you for another beautiful day in this wonderful city of Murfreesboro. We pray for our country and the leadership of our country. We pray for our state and our leadership of our state. And tonight, we pray for this council and the local governing body. We hope that we make the right decisions, and I hope we make you proud. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a group here tonight that want to introduce them. As a matter of fact, I think one of my fellow Leadership Rutherford mates back in, what year was it, Jamie, 1998? So, we have Leadership Rutherford here who's here tonight. We have Youth Leadership Rutherford. So if you're with Youth Leadership Rutherford, if you wouldn't mind standing up.
Stand up.
All right. Glad you are here tonight. Thank you very much. You've got the consent agenda in front of you. You've got a few items. Is there anything that needs to be removed from the consent agenda?
Here and now, I'll move for approval. Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, we'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
You have second readings. Consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 17OZ53 to rezone an area along Halls Hill Pike's Commercial Fringe CF District. Motion second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 17OZ54 to rezone an area along Stone River Mall Boulevard as Park P District. Move for passage.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, we'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 17OZ55 to rezone an area along West Lidle as Central Business Development CBD District 2017-432. Move for passage.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, we'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 17OZ56 to rezone an area along Ragland Avenue as Plan Residential Development PRD District, Walker Station PRD. Move for passage.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, we'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move to new business. We have considered for some certificates of compliance for wine in retail stores. Circle K 3716 1702 South Rutherford Boulevard. Circle K 3718 2610 South Church Street. And Circle K 3699 3401 Memorial Boulevard. Ms. Wright.
Mayor, this is part of the package that these locations have to turn into the state in order to be approved for the sale of wine. They have met our requirements, and they are all new locations.
So everything is in order?
Yes, sir.
One motion or three?
One.
I think one would be fine.
I'll move for approval. Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, we'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider for recommendations of the Transportation Director, contract with Neil Schaefer for Design and Construction Engineering Services for the Adaptive Signal Control Technology, ASCT, project on Rutherford and Northfield Boulevard. Mr. Kerr.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. To give you a little background, through TDOT's Competitive Condition Mitigation and Air Quality CEMAC Grant Program, the city of Murfreesboro submitted a proposal for an adaptive signal control project for Rutherford and Northfield Boulevard from southeast Broad Street to Highland Avenue. The intent was to add Rutherford Boulevard to the city's inventory of interconnected arterial systems to achieve coordinated benefits along this corridor as have been previously achieved in other interconnected and coordinated systems. TDOT ordered the city the grant request in December of 2016. Subsequently, the city council approved a contract with TDOT on June 8th, 2017. The project in general would consist of upgrading 14 signalized intersections, adding pedestrian signal timing elements at forwarding locations, nine CCTV cameras, and approximately nine miles of fiber optic cable for communication back to the traffic operations center. The adaptive signal system will use real-time algorithms through various sensors and inputs to predict traffic flows at levels to enable proactive control of the signal system. I'd like to mention that not all corridors are candidates for this type of system. Rutherford Boulevard was selected due to the inconsistent traffic patterns, somewhat controlled access, as well as moderate traffic volumes. Since this project involves the programming and expenditure of federal funds, acquisition of professional services require compliance with the Brooks Act, wherein the city is required to issue requests for proposals and select the most qualified firm based on relevant experience and technical abilities, with a cause for services to be negotiated. On July the 19th, 2017, the Transportation Department received statements of qualifications and letters of interest from consulting firms to perform the desired professional services for the project. The city's consultant evaluation committee had selected Neil Schaefer from the two shortlisted firms to provide the professional services associated with this project and had negotiated a professional service time and material contract in amount of $411,420. Services include TDOT and FHWA coordination, traffic data collection, system engineering analysis report, preliminary and final signal design, preliminary and final pedestrian design, preliminary and final fiber optic communication and CCTV design, utility coordination, utility make-ready documents, environmental documents, initial timing plan development, and to assist the city in the ASCT vendor selection, develop contract documents and plans, and assist the city in the bid process. Please note, this contract includes construction engineering inspection that is not part of the scope of work and will be negotiated at a later date once construction plans and schedules have been developed. The original design budget and the current TIP, Transportation Improvement Plan of the Metropolitan Transportation Planning Organization, for total of $373,700, which are all federal dollars. The contract price being recommended is for $411,420, leaving an unbudgeted deficit of approximately $37,720. This difference will be reprogrammed in the future from existing construction funds if needing, and those are all federal dollars. This project's currently in the MPO's 2040 Regional Transportation Plan and the MPO's 2017-2020 Transportation Improvement Program capital budget. Staff would recommend approval of the Design and Construction Engineering Service Contract between Neil Schaefer and the city of Murfreesboro. I'm available to answer any questions you may have. Also in the audience is Greg Judy with Neil Schaefer.
Any questions for Mr. Kerr on this contract?
Jim, I think you did a really good job of covering it. You made the comment that there were variables involved with some signalized intersections, and I think you used Northfield and Rutherford intersection to kind of say that's one of the good examples because of the presence of the university, I'm assuming, and the influx of traffic when schools in and the lack of traffic maybe when schools out and the signalized situation that could be improved with this system. I think that's a very good example. I was reading the report that you also sent out earlier today involving TDOT that we have like 10 signalized intersections within three miles, I think, of I-24 on Medical Center Parkway as well as O-4 Parkway. I mean, there's 20 intersections right there. Are those exempted because of the consistency of the traffic flow, or is there any variable that you would see within those that would require maybe this signalization program to be expanded at some point?
Well, those locations, we're currently, we currently have our closed-loop systems. They are a little bit more predictable and a little bit heavier volume. The adaptives are more catered for moderate volumes with more restricted, to some degree, access as well as the variation. So, I mean, we will be working with TDOT in the, you're talking about the I-24 corridor that I sent you guys?
Correct.
We will be working with those guys on timing plans and implementation associated with that project.
Okay.
Did that answer that question?
Yeah, yeah, it's a real good answer.
I think we just need a motion.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion second for the approval of this contract. Ms. Wright, we'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you.
Well, now, consider recommendations of the Fire and Rescue Chief regarding approval of, to hire Johnson and Bailey architects for architectural services for the new fire station on Blaze Drive.
Mayor and council, this is to approve for the architectural services, which would be architectural services, bid process services, and construction management services for the construction of Station 11, which is on Blaze Drive, just adjacent to Blackman High School. We're actually going to locate the station a little ways back from the intersection to enable us to get out better, both during school traffic and other peak flows of the daytime and evening hours in that area. But Johnson and Bailey would be the architects on this firm and be for the, for all the design phases of the station. I can answer any questions if you have any.
Chief, we've had some discussions about fire stations and building them and paying architects and paying consultants, and even though we just paid somebody $37,000 more than we budgeted on a consulting basis, we're trying to avoid that.
Yes.
You know, since we're trying to build these, you know, the term doesn't really do it justice, it's more kind of a cookie cutter design. Have we taken any, are we going to take any action on this to where we can save some money in the future?
Yes, we're actually developing a kind of a, I guess, a template-type fire station, cookie cutter template.
Better word.
Whatever you want to use, but a template-style fire station that will cut down in design cost as well as hopefully in construction cost in the future from learning different construction methods and et cetera. This architectural firm would be who we would likely use to do these other stations that we have coming in the future, replacing the Station 3, Station 6.
Do you anticipate, I guess I'll ask it more specifically, do you anticipate that the contract that we set up with Johnson and Bailey next time is going to be less than what we pay them this time?
Yes, and he, what they have agreed to is basically this sliding scale that we're using to encapsulate all the buildings that we are going to be building under Johnson and Bailey to where that scale slides downward. We're using the state scale fee schedule for the architects, and when that, when the dollar amount goes up on the projects, that sliding scale of fee rate goes down. So if we use them on future projects, that fee rate would slide downward because it would just add to this project.
All right, one last question. We got budgeted $2.7 million bucks?
Yes.
Is it going to come in at less than $2.7 million bucks?
We plan to, sir.
It's not good enough, but okay.
I think we've had a lot of discussions, you know, even in our last CIP about the engineer or the architecture and engineering staff of designing a building that is in that budget. So I think we've, you know, all made that clear that I hope the architects, because we will bid this out, correct?
Yes.
The construction. So I think a good thing on the low bid, if they design, if the architects design something that is more expensive than, from the bid, then it's their responsibility to design it to get it back to where it needs to be.
Without us saying no more.
And per this contract, they will be taking it all the way through. Johnson and Bailey will be responsible for both the design, the bidding of the project as well as construction management.
We've been carrying that message clearly to the architectural firms right now.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Go ahead, Madeline.
I was just going to make that motion. You go ahead.
Hold on just a second, I have one question. There you go. I thought I remembered from the, and the one request for next time, the copy of the contract was marked up and corrected, so I'd rather have a clean copy so we know the contract that you sign is the contract we look at, because there were some several corrections and additions that are.
Yeah, I apologize for that, getting put in the council agendas.
I thought I remembered in there something about 40% related to that. Is that, was that as a figure? Do you, additional buildings that were, the contract fee, am I right?
I think the contract on this one, the sliding scale fee on this one was about 6.7 or 6.8% was the total fee.
If we duplicated that without the precinct modification that's in that, in that design, I thought, I thought I read somewhere about.
Counsel, are you maybe referring to how they divided up their fee? Because they did divide up their fee by the different, the different areas of service that they're providing, and I don't think, there was a, if you added 30% plus or 10% for other administrative costs, I think you get to the 40%. So that's, that may be where that came from, but that wasn't their fee. That's how they're dividing their fee.
I just thought it was substantial savings in duplicating this template in the next.
Yes.
I thought that was a good, a good savings, and I just, you know, stuck in my head that it was 40%, but maybe not. But again, maybe the clean copy of the contract might help.
And I apologize for that edited copy getting in there with the markups.
I got you.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, we'll call the roll.
I don't think, did we get a motion second?
We do.
Because I think Bill stopped to ask another question.
Madeline had a motion.
Okay.
I make a, okay. I move that we accept the chief's recommendation.
Second. Motion second. Ms. Wright, we'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
We have approval to accept donation, a donation that we're very thankful for from Bridgestone of America LLC.
Yes, this is a, this is a donation from Bridgestone of Americas LLC. The actual donation that's coming, their emergency manager for Bridgestone, they have these trailers that they deploy called Bridgestone Emergency Response Team Trailers, deploy them across the southeast. This is a picture of the actual trailer that we're going to have donated to us. They've acquired a new trailer that they're converting into their emergency response trailer, and they essentially ask us if we would like to accept the donation of this trailer. The estimated value of this vehicle is about $350,000 outfitted inside. The generator and all those components are along the front of it, as well as, it's in, and I'll show you some pictures of the inside as well, but the, this is some of the pictures of the inside. It's very well-built for incident command type situations if we were to have any major incidents such as the rally that we just incurred or different events such as the Good Friday tornadoes or other events here in town that we were to have major hazardous material incident or a technical rescue, we could utilize this trailer for those. This is the area in the back, and the picture I just showed you before was in that corner right there where Battalion Chief Alexander is standing, and this is kind of coming from the mid-part of the trailer looking back toward the front. Again, this is the, this actually was a car hauler for Indy Racing League team, and so it was converted into more of an office incident command type space. It's wired network-wise for printers and other computer needs that we would have. It's got a lot of storage in it. This is looking from the midpoint to the back of the trailer and the rear doors, as well as a small little kitchenette area back there for the incident command team. This is the area just above the tractor wheels on the very front of the trailer, and this is the other part of that area up front of that particular trailer. So we are very excited to have been offered the donation from Bridgestone. We think it'll have multiple uses both here in Murfreesboro, as well as Murfreesboro is the host city for the Middle Tennessee Incident Management Team for the statewide mutual aid system.
It's really nice. We're really blessed as a city. It's really nice.
Is there some requirement to deploy in other incidences or something? Didn't that encompass?
It's not necessarily a requirement because Bridgestone's not putting those requirements on us as far as the donation goes, but as you're well aware, we've been very involved in the Tennessee Mutual Aid System responses to Gatlinburg, South Carolina, et cetera, and we are the host agency for the, for the all hazards incident management team. And it's worth noting that we use the all hazards incident management team or members of that team to develop the incident action plan for the rallies downtown, as well as multiple other incidents that we've responded to across the state through that team. So we would plan to deploy it if it's requested, just as we would any of our other resources that are needed in other jurisdictions.
Where are you going to store it?
For now, out behind Station 10 on the access road, behind Station 10, and then we're going to look for, you know, more permanent storage where we can kind of cover it.
Where are you going to pull it with?
Well, right now, we, Bridgestone has told us if we need to take it out of town for deployment, they would come get it and take it wherever we need to take it. In town, the Water Resources Department has a couple of tractors that they have that we could utilize to deploy it at this point in time, and the Fire Department has about 10 personnel that are certified as CDL drivers.
If there's no further questions, I think that's excellent. I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Approval, we next consider approval to lease a rehab emergency support trailer.
Along the same lines of the emergency response and major incidents, this is a lease agreement with the Tennessee Federation of Fire Chaplains. The Tennessee Federation of Fire Chaplains supports these rehab restroom trailers all over the state of Tennessee. This is a picture of the trailer. I think that, I'm not sure if this is the exact one we're getting, but it's very similar if this is not the exact one, but it's essentially a restroom facility on a trailer that has a bathroom as well as a shower that we dedicated to this. This would be essentially, again, for major incidents or any kind of events that we're having here that we could use this locally. We actually used a trailer from the Dixon Fire Department that was provided to us for the rally that we had last month. It was provided on, I guess, on the north side of the square for the officers located on that side of the square to be able to utilize in a parking lot there. We borrowed that from Dixon. This just adds another component to that. We have used multiple of these trailers over the last couple of years with Firehouse Expo, both at the training site and et cetera. They are, they are very handy to have in an environment, because some environments, it's almost impossible to get portlets out there in a time-effective manner, as well as having those facilities if we were to be responding to a major hazardous materials incident or otherwise, we would have decontamination provisions with the shower inside the trailer. But this is the looks of the trailer. This is the equipment in the back for, that services the trailer, including the generator, as well as the pumps for the water and the hot water heater and et cetera. And then this is the picture of the inside of the trailer and what it looks like.
Is, in the fiscal impact, it says the one-time payment of $13,500 for the lease term of 10 years will come from the budget. Is it one-time $13,500 or is it $13,500 a year for 10?
One-time $13,500 for the life of the trailer, and we anticipate extending that lease. I know that the first trailers that they built were built probably 15 years ago or longer, and they're still in service, and so those, this lease is extendable, and the good component about this lease agreement, instead of purchasing the trailer on our own, first of all, this cost about $30,000 to build. Tennessee Federation of Fire Chaplains wants to kind of make these deployable throughout the state, and that's our only caveat, is to be able the state, and that's our only caveat, is to be able to deploy this, but they also maintain this trailer. If something goes wrong with the generator, if something happens with the system that's on this, as far as the water system or anything like that goes, they are gonna maintain the trailer.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, Ms. Schreit, the call roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief. Thank you, chief. We have a letter from the Assistant Planning Director with regards to the Murfreesboro twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan, two thousand seventeen S one oh one.
Mr. Whitaker.
Good evening, mayor. I'm not the Assistant Planning Director, but I'll try to sit in for him tonight. First, if I can, I'd like to take just a brief minute to talk to you about a special census we're conducting. I can't get in front of a camera without plugging the census, since the planning department has been handed this census, anytime I get in front of camera, I'm gonna talk about it. We have done the first mail-out, and we had about a thirty-four percent response. We have actually this week set out the second mail-out. Anybody watching, if you get that card, please fill it out, send it back in to us. We're gonna try some other media acknowledgements for this, but this is worth possibly in excess of two million dollars to the taxpayers, that we can get our state tax revenue if we can show that our numbers are what we think they are, so please, please, send those back in to us. And every time I get up here, I'm gonna plug the census. Tonight, before you, as a resolution, that resolution is in support and acknowledgement of the twenty forty transportation plan. I'd like to give you a little brief history on the transportation plan that's, that the resolution is about. In twenty fourteen, we started a twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan for development for our city. All that twenty thirty-five plan, which covers roads, it covers water, sewer, it covers land development, it's a twenty-year plan for us, and it has been adopted with exception of Chapter Three. Chapter Three is the Mobility and Transportation Section. Tonight, we're asking you to consider acknowledgement of that. The Planning Commission actually approved the transportation plan on November the eighth unanimously. Mr. Sam Huddleston's here tonight, he's gonna give a brief PowerPoint, staff will be here to answer any questions after that PowerPoint, as well as the consultants are here tonight. After that, there's no public hearing necessary, but we'd ask that you consider this for approval afterwards. At this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Huddleston.
Thank you, Mr. Whitaker. Good evening, Mayor McFarland, members of the council, Sam Huddleston, City of Murfreesboro. First, we want to recognize our team, folks that played an important part of developing the twenty forty major transportation plan. Of course, we want to recognize our city management team, Mr. Lyons, Mr. Crumley, and Ms. Moody, who played a critical role in it, in advising and directing, and then Mr. Whitaker and Mr. Blomley from the Planning Department. Mr. Blomley was a last-minute scratch tonight, and, but we do appreciate his assistance on that. Our transportation director, Mr. Kerr, and assistant director, Mr. Balachandra, are here. Our city engineer, Mr. Chris Griffith is here, and then from Neil Schaefer, Mr. Daniel Richardson, and Mr. Greg Judy, who are all important parts of that. I did leave a couple items at your chairs just before the meeting, one of those is a chronology, it's where we've been on developing this edition of the major transportation plan, and it covers not all of the elements, but the major milestones, starting with some of our workshops, and then concluding with the approval of the plan by the Planning Commission on November the eighth. Another piece of information I left at your table was, actually, this was in your agenda package, and this is a larger printed copy of the map that includes the projects on the twenty forty plan, as well as our short-term, mid-term, and long-term improvements, and we've prioritized those, and I got that on eleven by seventeen just for ease of review and viewing. And so we are here tonight to talk about the city's twenty forty major transportation plan. You know, all the projects that we look at have, have three common elements, all the road projects we look at, have an identified need, each project we do has an identified need, each project we do has funding, it's, and then each project we do has a place to build it, and so we like to say that, that each project has a need, and then to fulfill that need, we need money to build it with and a place to build it, and so the first three reasons for us to adopt a major transportation plan cover those three reasons, identifying the needs, addressing those needs, and then it helps the city as we identify our capital needs for budget planning. The third bullet there then is the identification and preservation of right-of-ways needed to build those road systems. This is a pretty important tool to the planning process as we review development plans and, and projects that come before us, we use this document to help identify and protect those locations. And then the third, the fourth reason that this, adopting a major transportation plan is important to our community, is it provides that information to our communities, good public information, it's out there for public consumption, it's also out there for us as a community, as we make public decisions, locations of schools and fire stations, major projects, as we look at land use and zoning, and then it helps the private decision-makers, a new residence purchase, perhaps a land decision. All of those reasons are why we propose and adopt a major transportation plan as a community. So we like to look back, I think we have a very good story to tell here, since nineteen ninety-seven, twenty-one years, we have constructed eighty-three projects, that's the average of one every three months being bid, that source of funding, city, county, state, federal, and local sources. Those eighty-three projects have cost three hundred and fifty million. Then interesting points, that last bullet, only fifty-two percent of that has been city funds, and so we've been able to leverage fifty cents on the dollar for roadway improvements in the city of Murfreesboro to benefit our citizens, fifty cents on the dollar, and that's as we look back the past twenty-one years. We still have projects in the queue, we still have projects we're working on, thirty of those projects are in the queue, and those projects, again, include funding from all of those sources, projected cost of three hundred and sixteen million, and again, I think this is a good story to tell, we've leveraged that expenditure, again, about fifty cents on the dollar, to get three hundred and fifty, or three hundred and sixteen million dollars worth of improvements, the city expenditures estimated at a hundred and fifty million. And you see a pie chart here that represents that total projected spending for about twenty-five years' worth of projects, six hundred and seventy million dollars. I would like to point out, as we look at the dollars, these were dollars that were accumulated at the time they were spent, they have not been adjusted forward to a present worth value, nor have they been adjusted forward for a future worth value, but that were actually the records that we have in our database of the actual cost and expenditures. So where are we going? It's time for a new transportation plan. The current major thoroughfare plan we're working on was adopted in two thousand and three, we have amended that a couple times, but we're quickly approaching the end of the horizon, the planning horizon, really the last third of that planning horizon. The twenty forty plan gives us a plan for the next twenty-five years, it, it also incorporates current information, primarily the recommended land use plan and the twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan, and also incorporates new information on growth and needs for our community. And so our study area included the, of course, the city limits shown and wide, and then the gray area around the city limits, our planning boundary, called the urban growth boundary. It's interesting to note here that, that our projects often don't stop at our political boundaries, and we often work with our neighbors, Town of Smyrna and Rutherford County, and that's no exception with the projects that we'll look at in the twenty forty major transportation plan. Three major themes, the first theme was improved connectivity, that's really represented by the six blue arrows on this map, and we really see in a lot of the projects just improve that connectivity within our community. I think most of you are aware that about half of our population lives west of I twenty-four, and about half of it lives east of I twenty-four, and so a lot of the projects you see will help improve that connectivity. Another thing that you will note about our community, I twenty-four and eight forty serve as a barrier sometimes to that connectivity, as does the CSX Railroad and the Stones River and its tributaries, and so you'll see a lot of projects in here that improve that connectivity by addressing those geographic barriers. The second major theme is improved corridor capacity on that northwest to southeast corridor, and that's represented by the green arrow in the middle, and that's, you know, primarily getting traffic in and out of our community. You might call it the daily driver, you might call it the commuter, but you might also call it that traffic that flows between our community and the major Nashville metropolitan area. And then the third theme I really like to call is the theme where we close the gap, we, we connect the dots between some major road elements, and so these, these three themes summarize most of the projects that are recommended in our plan. This is the actual road projects on a map, that's in your packet, and I left that for you in a, in a printed version for your review. There are two additions that we made as a result of the public review process, we extended Bradiville Pike from its current location on this map to, to its intersection with Joby Jackson Parkway, and then we also extended, recommended an extension of Blackman Road from its current termination at Manson Pike, to actually include that stretch that goes from Manson Pike down to Veterans Parkway. Project summarized, or the plan summarized by thirty carryover projects, and then forty-six new projects, gives us a total of seventy-six projects for the next twenty-five years. Obviously, we're not gonna build those seventy-six projects all at the beginning, and so we prioritize those, short-term, mid-term, and long-term, and, and those projects are listed on the sheets that I laid before you, before the meeting. Short-term projects really cover the first third of that planning horizon, and that's divided into twenty-five projects for this, for this group, for the folks that are here today, for the short-term, these are the projects you'll see coming back before you as, as priority projects as we move those ahead.
Hey, Sam, can I stop you right there?
Absolutely.
Just while we're talking about that, so I noticed on the long-term improvement projects, Old Salem widening, Castle Street to Middle Tennessee Boulevard, which road is Old Salem? Is it back there on, is it the one that goes by the church and all the way out to?
Yeah, there are a couple, there are a couple stretches of Old Salem in our community.
Yeah, okay.
And the, the stretch that this refers to is Old Salem, Veterans Parkway, the State Route ninety-nine, I'm not sure which.
No, Castle Street to Middle Tennessee Boulevard, the number one priority on the long-term. That's the one that would go from the brewery slash.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Backstreet.
That's right, and that's, there's this Old Salem stretch there, that's in the downtown area, that was a need identified in the historic bottoms plan to improve that corridor connection out of the center part of the bottoms.
Is Castle on the north side of the railroad, or is it on the south side?
It is on the east side of the railroad, and Castle, actually, Castle actually is east and west of Church Street, so there's an East Castle, there's an East Castle, and a West Castle, and this, this refers to West Castle, or, or is it notably known Castle Street, and it's right there in the Clark Iron and Metal.
So does it come all the way to Clark, or does it, does it start on the other side of the railroad track? I'm just curious, I, I'm trying to figure out how we, where it would go if it just ended.
Oh, Castle Street, well, right now, Old Salem ends at an intersection, at the intersection of Front and Castle.
Okay. All right, I got you.
Right there at Hooper Supply.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Hooper Men's.
Yeah, got it.
And then it extends out to Middle Tennessee Boulevard.
Got it.
Sampsonite and Sledgecraft.
All right, got it. Sorry.
Not a problem, I'm, questions come up, certainly, we'll stop the presentation discussing any items you, mayor and council would wish to discuss.
Sam, while Rick is interrupting.
Mm-hmm.
Would it be okay if I asked, why don't see Jones Boulevard on the short-term?
Sure.
Why is Jones Boulevard?
Sorry for that dramatic pause. One of the things you will not see in the recommended projects are committed projects.
Okay.
And so projects, the, the committed projects that we referred to in that intermediate slide, we said, where are we going? Where have we been? That, that discussed the last twenty-one years, where are we going? That discusses projects that are committed but not yet built, and that includes projects like Thompson Lane, Cherry Lane, Jones Boulevard, Rucker Lane, Brinkley Road, those are all projects we've committed to build, we've got skin in the game at this point, and, and a commitment from this body in some form or fashion in engineering, design, construction, joint funding, agreements with TDOT and so forth. And so the, the reason you don't see that in the recommended projects is, is we're actively pursuing that to get it to construction.
May I ask you if, how, exactly how many projects there are that are committed already? I think you just named.
I'm gonna have to poll the audience, if that's okay, because I don't have that number right in front of me, but, but perhaps Mr. Richardson or one of the other team members have got that number in front of them.
Just roughly, four?
Thirty.
Thirty, okay.
Actually, let me see if that's correct, that was referenced in one of our slides here, I do believe.
I should have asked if I could ask.
Yes, that's right, it was covered in that slide.
The circles, yeah.
Current and completed projects, there are currently thirty committed projects.
Thank you.
Three hundred and sixteen million. Not to be confused with the thirty carryover projects, happen to be the same number there. And so the, the city staff and, and our team looked at these projects, and based on the needs in our, our community, and I might say the, the modeling that we did with the traffic counts, which help identify capacity issues for us, we, we went after some of those capacity issues pretty hard in this first, first term, to help identify those needs that are, that are identified right now. Part of the twenty thirty-five effort, twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan included anticipating or predicting or projecting where our growth areas would be for the next five, ten, and fifteen years, and so that information also fed into our major transportation plan and prioritization of projects. Obviously, we can see the next three to five years fairly well, beyond that, the horizon and the information gets a little less clear, but what you'll see is, is our effort, staff's effort, to, to focus on the twenty-five projects represented as short-term projects. We also realize that from time to time, projects of opportunity show up. A developer comes to town, and a project becomes available to us, and so occasionally we'll move some of these projects up because there's a project of opportunity, and we've been very successful in the past in leveraging those opportunities to build some roadways for, you know, fifty cents on the dollar and so forth, and so, but this is our recommendations of our prioritization for these projects over the next twenty-five years. And the funding on that breaks down this way, it's a, it's a billion dollars, those are today dollars, since we don't know exactly when we're gonna build those projects, we can't escalate those to a future worth, and so just keep in mind, as we look back at the, at the, the projects that we've built or committed to now, six hundred and seventy million in twenty-five years, when, when the city of Murfreesboro's capabilities were less, our community's needs were less, and so we're, we're asking and recommending that you approve this resolution that would, would take us into the next twenty-five years of our transportation projects.
I might add just one, one piece to what Mr. Huddleston just said, you know, obviously we've identified projects for the next twenty-five years, you know, however, when it comes time for individual projects to be funded, city council will have multiple opportunities to talk about those, to ensure it's affordable, that we can handle the funding for these projects, so there are no dollars attached to this, those funding decisions for individual road projects will be made by the council through the CIP process, through initial resolutions, through bond issues, so you'll have multiple opportunities to look at the funding and make decisions at that point in time.
So for either one of you guys, do you have a plan in place to try to, to include this, include this body on the prioritization piece of this? I mean, I see that from an engineering standpoint, you know, you guys have placed a priority on some of these things, but, I mean, is there a way that, you know, that we might look at some of these, and I can look at one or two of these on here, that I can already tell will be, you know, large turnout at the public hearing kind of thing? tell will be, you know, large turnout at the public hearing kind of things, where there'd be some pretty significant controversy? And frankly, it may not be something we want to do as a body. And so rather than just putting that on our agenda one Thursday night, is there any plan in place to involve us in this process? You know, I got called a sub-human money-grubbing...
Stop there.
You-know-what in an email...
Timeout.
...this week over a project that's on a plan that I had, you know, basically nothing to do with. And so I guess, at some point or another, I think it might be appropriate to bring us in on it. I don't know, you know, to some level, just enough for us to kind of say, "Hey, maybe we think this might be where we have a priority," so that when you guys bring it to us...
We'd be glad to set up a workshop first part of the...
Sure, and...
Only if everybody else wants to, but for my purposes...
Mr. Lance, I'd say this. We're here to execute your vision. We're recommending this vision. We're recommending these projects on this major transportation plan tonight. But in reality, staff and management, we appreciate any insight you would give us on your thoughts on prioritization. We've got our thoughts and ideas based on the technical look at it, and the practical look at it, and the needs, and funding, and, you know, reviewing things like, "What's TDOT doing? What are the growth patterns doing?" And so we consider, we're considering that information, but we certainly appreciate any insight or input that mayor and council would have in helping shaping that vision for us. And then your priorities become our priorities. And so we, I think Mr. Lyons mentioned it, that workshop, and that's one of the discussions we had earlier, that a workshop to let you know which projects out of those twenty-five or so that are in the short-term list, staff's ready to focus on right away. We're ready to bring some action to this board for approval for study, planning studies, which are fairly low-dollar amounts, but what it does is it starts that project rolling. And so those are the, there's about six or seven that we've looked at off of this list of twenty-five that we've discussed, and we think we'd like to bring back to this board for action individually, each one of those six or seven projects. And we think they'll meet a fairly immediate need, and now's the time for us to get going on them.
Is any of these twenty-five short-term projects on the CIP?
My expectation is no, because if it's on the CIP, we generally look at that as a committed project, so it would be in that list of projects that were mentioned very early in the presentation.
Since we haven't approved the CIP yet, in your, in our workshop, if we had one, we need to make sure we're delineating between what we're approving in the CIP versus what you're talking about in this next level, okay? And I think it's important, that's why we haven't approved the CIP yet, is because we're not sure of the number of dollars we have and how we're going to allocate those dollars, okay? So let's make sure we're square on that, please.
And I think Mr. Griffith punched me here, he'd like to step in, so I'm gonna step aside, because he's the boss.
Thank you, Sam. Mr. Lance, we have, we've actually started looking at some of the projects that we're looking at on the current CIP, and making maybe some adjustments, not necessarily, you know, scrapping any projects or anything, but certainly moving some around on future years, maybe not necessarily this year. Of course, what Mr. Hudson was alluding to, a lot of the initial work that's done on these is fairly low-dollar. We're hoping maybe even to absorb them as part of our general fund, some of the studies, just to make sure we got the, or try to, really try to nail down the alignments and looking at some of the routes that we're taking. Really, a lot of the routes that are shown on these plan sheets are really just straight-line connections, or really maybe looking at an existing road that could be widened, but there may be a better route to take. I know just some of the projects that we've discussed, we've already looked at two or three routes, but there may be a third or fourth that we want to consider further. So that's the kind of studies, just kind of nail down routes, and then the engineering would come later after that. But to answer your original question, yes, we have looked at some that we may even want to, if the mayor and council wants to move forward with it, that we would add to the CIP.
Well, and just, I mean, for what Bill's question was, I think it's just important to make sure that we know when we're, the next time we get together, you know, which ones are which. Which ones have you already put under the committed section because they're in the CIP? Because, and then we've got these that are next, so that we don't get them confused on which are which, so that we know how much money we're spending.
Sure, absolutely. We can do that.
Whether or not that kind of matches our priorities too, I suppose.
Yeah, absolutely.
Chris, while you're up there, not to keep Sam sitting down, but I want to publicly thank you for the fantastic job you've done in the last three or four weeks of getting the bridge on, at Bill Jones Bridge on Medical Center Parkway, as well as Jones Boulevard next to the water tank. I mean, there were significant bumps in road damage there in those roadways, and called you about it less than a month ago. And because of complaints I've received from the fire department, and their trucks having trouble with those roadways, and as of today, those problems have been resolved, and I just want to say thank you so much for the fantastic job you did of getting those repaired.
Thank you, councilman. That's very kind. We appreciate folks taking the time and letting us know about the problems. We try to be everywhere, but it's always good to be made aware of any problems that we need to address, but thank you for your kind words.
Gladly remain seated for that one, Mr. Smotherman. So we'll wrap up right here. A couple of things we need to do, staff and our team need to do as it addresses the transportation needs of our community, complete our individual project sheets. We put a lot of detailed information in there about the sponsor of the project, the source of the funding, the type of roadway it is, and Mr. Kerr, and previously Mr. Richardson did a fantastic job of maintaining those individual project sheets and updating those every time that there was a change or additional information to add. And then the other thing we really need to do to complete the major transportation plan and the 2035 comprehensive plan, we need to complete the mobility chapter. The major transportation plan is a very significant element of that, but it's not the only thing that's addressed there. And so our consultant will, they will continue the drafting of that mobility chapter, which will address all forms of transportation and not just roadways, along with some other information. And that chapter is missing from the currently adopted 2035 plan. Our goal is to get that drafted and back through the review and approval process to be included in the 2030 comprehensive plan. And so our team's ready to answer any additional questions you may have. We do recommend approval of the resolution. It'll be the next action on the agenda for you tonight.
Any questions for staff?
Thank you.
There's no questions coming, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Mr. Wright, you'll call the rule.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for all your hard work. We'll consider recommendations to Assistant City Attorney with regards to master agreements with Crown Castle, a master antenna attachment agreement, and a master license agreement regarding use of the city right-of-way.
Yes, mayor, council members, thank you. An appropriate segue, I guess, from the movement of motor vehicles and transportation now to the movement of telephone calls and data. As we grow and as the demand for cellphone service and cellular data increases, we have need for more and a variety of antennas and other devices to make that system work. We have representatives of Crown Castle here tonight. They're gracious enough to come down and be here if there are any questions. Before I go through my short, hopefully short, presentation, I would like to introduce, since they've made the effort to come here, let's see, in order, they are Kelly Rogers, Victoria Wedenthaler, Eric, Jason Kofender, and Eric O'Brien are here from Crown Castle. Crown Castle is ready to start on a project to install small-cell antennas on several combination of primarily MED poles and perhaps some city light poles. This particular project will run roughly from near Clark on Broad Avenue. It'll run down Broad from Clark to South Church, and essentially Old Fort from Broad out almost to Thompson Lane. There'll be a number of antennas attached to existing poles. They may need to actually replace some poles that will need to be changed out in order to accommodate the antenna. That will also involve two more agreements, one of which is a standard pole attachment agreement with MED. That agreement has been approved and is ready to go. It's not before you tonight. That is only an MED agreement, and it's consistent with the other pole attachment agreements that MED has in place with other carriers. The second agreement, in a way the first agreement, but the first one before you tonight, is we're calling it an antenna attachment agreement, and that is an agreement that will be both with MED and to the extent necessary with the city, to the extent that it involves city light poles, or any other pole that the city, as opposed to MED, as a department of the city, owns and controls. And then the third agreement is a use of the right-of-way agreement for that, for installation of conduit for running fiber-optic cable in the right-of-way underground. The antenna attachment agreement that's before you is based substantially on the MED pole attachment agreement. There are a lot of similarities. It is a piece of equipment that will be attached to an existing pole. There are some differences because the configuration of an antenna as opposed to, that's going to be attached someplace on the pole, and perhaps some accessory equipment also on the pole is different than attaching a, either a copper or fiber-optic cable to the pole. And then the underground agreement is very consistent with one we had put in place with companies prior to this that have also done, none of those companies have put in small-cell antennas, but they have installed underground fiber-optic cable in our rights-of-way. The, there is only one change to the document that was provided to you, and that is in the Attachment B to the right-of-way agreement. Crown Castle is agreeing to provide the city with up to eight dark fibers for the fiber that they install, both underground and overhead within the city. In that agreement, there's a provision that if there are, if there is a problem, that the city asks them to troubleshoot and find the location of the problem, that if the problem is on the city's side of the system, as opposed to being out in Crown Castle's fiber, then the city will reimburse them the cost of that troubleshooting effort. That was inadvertently taken out of that agreement by me. It was supposed to stay there, and we would propose to put that back in. I think that's really the high point, so I'd be happy to try to answer any questions. And if you've got specific technical questions about the systems, I think Crown Castle representatives would be able to discuss that with you.
What's the term of the agreement?
Both of these are ten-year agreements, and they're automatically renewed unless a party elects to terminate.
Either party?
Either party may terminate.
For any reason?
Correct. And there's also some termination for cause, for default, if there's a default that we, that either party could terminate if there's a default.
Is this an exclusive contract that, can other people put antennas up?
This is, we could not make, well, we cannot legally make this exclusive, so it's a non-exclusive contract. The limitation is space. So for instance, on an MED pole, there is a finite amount of space that's available for communications carriers. If that space is filled up and another carrier wants to come in, there is a process whereby a replacement pole can be put in that's taller and allows more space. Obviously, that's a cost, that's a cost to the carrier that wants to come in. And the same with, right now, if there was a pole that they want to go onto that's full, that doesn't have any space on it, it would be up to them to, I guess, essentially work around their variety, you know, maybe you go underground at that area, maybe you install a five- or ten-foot taller pole to create more communication space.
And how many?
But it's not exclusive. We have, and we will, and we have to allow any authorized carrier on a non-competitive, nondiscriminatory basis to come in.
How many antennas are we talking?
This project has, what, fifteen?
No, there's not, twelve.
Twelve, okay. There's twelve antennas in this, in this project. Now, I think we anticipate that not only Crown Castle will come in at some point putting in more, but other carriers and other companies are, will be coming in to put antennas in similar places and in other places.
And there's a fee that's attached to this, thirteen?
Yes. There is not a fee as such for the underground, for the underground use of the right-of-way. For the pole attachment with MED, the fee is, I think it's twenty-nine ninety-seven, but round numbers, it's thirty dollars per year per pole, per attachment, and that's the same as other, as we're charging with other companies.
How much is that again?
It's not expensive, thirty dollars per year per pole. Now, the antenna, the fee to attach an antenna is at twelve fifty per year per pole. The antennas are configured differently. You've got a different weight issue. You've got different engineering issues. And the pole attachment fee, now this is to attach a horizontal fiber-optic cable or copper cable to a pole, is regulated and influenced significantly by TBA. TBA at this point has not weighed in on the fees that can be charged for attaching an antenna. They may do that, and it may be higher or lower than what we're proposing in this agreement. Just as a very general, the large, we call macro-cell towers that stick up a couple hundred feet around town essentially provide coverage. The small cells are being, is one of the methods being used to provide more capacity. And they provide coverage if you've got a small, isolated area that's not getting covered. You could put up one of these a lot cheaper than you can build a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot macro antenna. But this is to provide additional coverage and additional capacity, I'm sorry, additional capacity for the mountains and mountains of data that we are all wanting to transmit back and forth on our wireless devices.
And also the public safety that this solution allows, have better public safety.
Would you mind coming up to the microphone here, just quickly?
Thank you for your time. Yeah, and so the other benefit is that we see this as a public safety benefit too as well, so not only is it capacity and coverage, but also provides better benefits for public safety as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any questions?
No other questions, I move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, for the master antenna attachment agreement.
Right.
Yeah, good, we should do them separately, thank you.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Can we now have a motion for the master license agreement regarding city use, or use of city right-of-way?
Yes, so moved.
Motion.
Does this mean there'll be more people driving, looking at their cell phones?
Can we get them to where they look like a tree at the top?
Second. Motion, a second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Can we now have a motion for the master license agreement regarding city use, or use of city right-of-way?
Yes, so moved.
Motion.
Does this mean there'll be more people driving, looking at their cell phones?
Can we get them to where they look like a tree at the top?
Second. Motion, a second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Can we now have a motion for the master license agreement regarding city use, or use of city right-of-way?
Yes, so moved.
Motion.
Does this mean there'll be more people driving, looking at their cell phones?
Can we get them to where they look like a tree at the top?
Second. Motion, a second. Ms. Wright, we'll call the rule.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We have several beer permits. Ms. Wright?
We do. Let me start by, I'm gonna go through them quickly, but let me start by saying they're all labeled as catering beer permits at the top, and that was just not taken off from a former application. These are all regular beer permits, they are not for catering. We have a new restaurant coming to 2314 Medical Center Parkway, Suite A5. They do lack their building codes inspections, otherwise that application is in order. We have a new restaurant coming to 2306 Medical Center Parkway, Suite B1. That application also lacks finishing their building codes inspections, otherwise that application is in order. We have a new truck stop convenience store at 2440, I'm sorry, something new, it's an ownership change, at 2441 South Church Street. That application is in order, they do need to finish their building codes inspections before that could be issued. We have an ownership change for a gas station at 2736 Florence Road. That application is in order, they do need to finish their building codes inspections before we could issue that permit. We have a ownership change for a restaurant at 505 Casey Lane, Suite E. That application is in order, other than completing their building codes inspections. We have an owner, I'm sorry, a name change for a retail convenience store at 110A John Rice Boulevard. That application is in order, we just need to get them to finish up their building codes inspections before we can issue. We have a new location of a fuel station at 2472 New Salem Road. That application is in order, they do need to finish their building codes inspections. We have an ownership change for a pharmacy store at 1696 Middle Tennessee Boulevard, another for the same owner for 2528 Old Fort Parkway, and another for 2490 South Church Street and 2485 Memorial Boulevard. Those are all an ownership change corporate-wide, and they are in order, except for completing their building codes inspections. Be glad to try to answer any questions. We would not issue any of these until building codes has signed off on them.
We have a motion for these beer permits.
So moved.
Motion, a second.
Motion, a second. Ms. Wright, we'll call the rule.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Right, any other, we have any statements, Ms. Wright?
No, sir, not tonight.
No bills to pay. All right, any other business to come before the staff or city council?
I've got one piece.
Mr. Lance?
I'm just gonna throw this out here for you guys, to find out, sort of let you guys think on it, really. I don't think I really want to make it in the form of a motion tonight, but the, what we've been calling the Bridge Over Broad, I think we probably need to look for a different name. I've talked to a few folks on this, and to sort of honor our first responders and the folks that have been here all along in this town, taking care of us. You know, my proposal would be think about something like a first responders' memorial bridge. You know, if there's other options and other ways we can go about this, that's fine, but I think the process is that we, we have a resolution or a motion or whatever we do here to pass that, and then we have to send it on up to the state, I believe, and tell them that we've approved it. I spoke with a couple legislators, and they said as long as we send it up to them, and it's something we all agree on, it's probably pretty likely they're gonna agree on it. So just wanted to encompass both, you know, all of the first responder folks here, and that's really the only way I know how to do it, so, as far as just with that kind of a title. So anyway, something for y'all to think about. Maybe we can converse over it in a workshop one day, or in the next meeting, or whatever y'all want to think about, or if you have other ideas, let's hear them. Okay?
Maybe want to even open it up to the public. I like your idea, I think it's a great idea, and certainly recognizing the first responders would be wonderful. But just so it's not me and you to pick it, it might be a good idea to open it up to the public and have some public input as well.
Rob, if you could take the lead on maybe making sure we get something done on that, rather than continuing to call it Bridge Over Broad for the remainder of our lives and...
Can we call it finished?
I hope tomorrow to have some more information about the completion date. You know, I think Bell was still targeting December the...
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth. I think staff's been meeting with them, hopefully I'll have an update for you tomorrow on a definitive date. Clearly, when we're at the end of a project, you know, TDOT's in this position, the city often is, once we turn it over to the public, finishing up last-minute changes becomes protracted. And so I think Bell and TDOT are trying to figure out what they can get done before they open it up to the public, so that any remaining items can be done without having to disrupt traffic or delaying the process. So I hope to have more definitive date for you, hopefully by tomorrow, but certainly by the first of the week. Just to get some clarification, as Mr. Smotherman mentioned, getting some public input, you know, we're glad to help you with the naming of it. I know the Bridge Over Broad's kind of been that placeholder, is, you know, just a little bit more clear understanding about exactly what you want us to do next. The first responders is a terrific idea, I certainly support that, but just, do we want to have a public input process, or do you want me to skip, put this on next week's agenda?
Maybe a Facebook, I don't know, maybe Jennifer could put something on Facebook, see if there's anybody who makes any comments about it or whatever, and if not, we'll, or whatever, we'll take what they have to say. I don't know what else we could do.
How about we do, you know, we've got a, the Parks and Recreation Department posted a thing on, you know, the, if we do something like what Parks and Rec just did for the West Park, and that way it gives a database for some feedback, we can look at it and make a decision from there.
All right, well, we'll open it up in December to get that kind of feedback.
Maybe even put some signage up right next to the bridge right now, name this bridge. I mean, just people sitting there at the intersection, give them the opportunity to ride by and go, hey, I know what I want to call this thing.
In case y'all haven't clicked on DNJ.com lately, I stand by that bridge pretty much every day in that same black golf shirt. Have y'all noticed? And the funny, the funny thing, the funny thing is, the status when they took that picture back in the summer is pretty much the same status it is right now.
I have a friend that affectionately calls the bridge old rusty already, so apparently he likes it.
No, we can't make fun of ourselves, who can we make fun of? Right, can't laugh at ourselves. Leadership Rutherford, thank y'all for being here. Mr. Sweeney, thank you for, good seeing y'all. Any other business to come before the council?
Mayor, could I just say, like Mr. Whitaker did for the census, I'd like to put in a plug to remind citizens that our tax due date is coming up, the end of December, actually the very first of January because of holidays. My office has gotten a lot of calls that people are saying they didn't get a bill, more than usual, I mean, that happens, but more than usual, the bills are available online, they can call my office, we'll be glad to mail another one or email one. So if you hear anybody saying anything about that, please refer them to us, we're happy to help them. We have Mr. Mitchell coming over to the office Monday to talk to him about it. His office does print and mail those bills, and we're trying to work with him to see what else we might do. I'm trying to put advertisements out. Mike Browning's been good about doing a video for us, and it's on social media. So we're just trying to get the word out there. I don't want people being upset when they're late in January because they didn't get a bill, even if it's a courtesy bill. It hurts their feelings a little bit to be told that they're late. So we'd like to put that word out as often as possible.
And for those who got multiple bills, you only have to pay them once.
They only have to pay them once, yeah. I don't know what happened this year, but we're glad to help them work through their concerns.
Awesome. All right, see no other business, we'll stand adjourned.